Mr. Cook?
Excused.
Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Laiborn?
Here.
Mr. Luna?
Here.
Mayor Orr?
Here.
Dr. Rennie?
Present.
Mr. Roybal?
Present.
Mr. Shaner?
Here.
Mr. White?
Present.
Mr. Case?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Well, yes, I am.
All members are present, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Presentation of Main Street Leadership Award to Councilman Richard Johnson.
Mr. White, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Helping me do this will be Mr. Bruce Heimbach. Bruce, why don't you come up?
Good evening. And for everyone, if you could, mute your phones if you haven't already, put them on silent, and if you come up, introduce yourself. Thank you so much.
Bruce Heimbach, member of the DDA and recently appointed member of the Main Street State Advisory Board.
Welcome.
Thank you. So we're here this evening to present Councilmember Richard Johnson with the Wyoming Main Street Leadership Award. Richard is a leader, an unconventional leader, but a leader and a champion. He has worked tirelessly in many creative ways to fund the splash pad in the depot. If he hasn't been in your pockets, you know he will be. Due to his efforts, the funding is almost complete and the project is ready to move forward. For that, thank you, Richard. But Richard's leadership of downtown projects doesn't stop there. He's been instrumental in the Downtown Re-ride Program and other projects that benefit downtown, as well as youth and nonprofit agencies. He's put out the call for others to join him in making a difference in agencies in Cheyenne. Just ask needs. They were on the receiving end of his efforts and found that they needed to store 500 boxes of Kleenex. It takes up a bit more room than they realized. Youth Alternatives, Habitat for Humanity, Family Promise, Friendship Playground, Black Dog Rescue, and Safe Harbor are just a few of the agencies that have benefited from some of his leadership and hours of volunteerism. He may be leaving the council, but I'm sure his efforts to help others and make a difference in downtown will continue. He is a leader and a champion and a very deserving recipient of the Wyoming Main Street Leadership Award. On behalf of the many people you have helped in the past and will continue to help in the future for the benefit of downtown and beyond, thank you, Councilmember Richard Johnson.
Wait, 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 wait.
Okay. Oh, thank you.
You're a great community champion.
Don't let it go to my head. All right. I guess in regards to this, I didn't do this by myself. Usually, any idea came from the community. They just came to me because they were just like, can you execute it? And if it had enough merit, then I, and a good solid plan behind it and a good volunteer base, then I was more than willing to help out. As was stated with the Re-ride Program, that's now going on its, like, third year. So pretty much, the main people I have to thank are my parents, who actually came again. They came to my swearing-in, and then I don't get too tedious with how boring these meetings are, so they're not at every one, but I thought they might want to actually come to this one. And then my friend Kim, for obviously being the stronger mental person in the relationship. True. My friend Keith from Ernie November. Once again, prior to even council and since we were, like, 15 years old, him and I have approached do-it-yourself mentality, geez, since we were, what are we, 44 now, so almost 45. So for the last 30 years, Keith and I have pursued do-it-yourself activities. Him through the music and concert series that he's done since we were in high school, me through the skateboarding aspect of the community. And then we teamed up with multiple things, like skateboard contests, mixed skateboard contests/ music events. Last year with Art Cheyenne, we put out a CD with 45 local artists to showcase what the local music scene looked like, to benefit something that wasn't brought up, the Cheyenne Youth Symphony, to promote basically our next music scene, to encourage young people to get together, start their own bands, and keep Cheyenne's music scene vibrant. Melanie, Megan, Andrew have helped me with tons of things. As weird as it is, me being agnostic. Robin from the Camilla Shelter, if it's hard to find room for 500 boxes of Kleenex, try finding room for 8,000 rolls of toilet paper, about 300 things of duct tape, padlocks, sunscreen, and everything else for the homeless shelter. So Robin's always praying for me. For some odd reason, I guess she feels I need it. And then Amber and Gunner, you know, they've always backed me on whatever projects that I've tried to undertake, and then especially with the splash pad that's going on currently, without the cooperation of Darren Rudolph, I'm not doing this one alone. Darren has worked tirelessly, you know, from the Visit Cheyenne standpoint, to help us get to the point we're at, the last count with commitments. We've raised about $275,000 since February of this year, so we're down to about our last 25K. So once again, just like Howie said, I'll get into your pockets. I'm going to preach from the pulpit here and say that, you know, if you haven't already donated to this project, as well as the countless others that I have in the back of my head to start next, I encourage you to always do so. And by all means, I encourage the community. I'm only one person. If you have an idea that you think has merit, you don't need a city councilman. You don't need anybody else. Just pursue your own dreams. Create your own team of individuals to make what you want accomplished. Without more people like me that are willing to put boots on the ground, all they are is ideas. And so with that, and then I can see him right now because I beat him last year in a community advocacy award online, but Alf's a perfect example of just, like, raising the bar as far as raising over a million dollars to the community. I'm not quite up to his standards yet, but just, he's just another example of when you have something that you want to do, just to put your feet down, get your right people involved, and you can make anything happen. So thank you for the DDA for nominating me, all my councilmembers that have contributed to everything I've done, whether it be ordinance changes, resolutions, and/or just a couple of bucks here and there for whatever thing I was doing. So thank you to everyone in the room, and, you know, it's well appreciated. Thank you.
Again, congratulations.
Consent agenda. All agenda items listed with the designation of CA are considered to be routine items by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the governing body so requests and support by two other members is received. Any item removed from the consent agenda will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda.
Thank you. Are there any items any member wishes to have removed from the consent agenda? Any items? Any items? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the, oh, Mr. White?
I'd like to remove item 19B.
Concur.
Okay, item 19B. And for those of you following along, 19B is Applications, Licenses, Permits, The Transfer of the Liquor License Application Filed with the City Clerk's Office for Cheyenne Frontier Days from, held by Steamboats. All right, all those in favor, please, oh, we've got what we need for concurrents. So that item has been removed from the consent agenda. Are there any other items to be removed from the consent agenda? Any other items? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, oh, I need a motion.
Move. Second.
Okay, moved by Mr. Roybal, seconded by Mr. Cook. Now, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion passes with the exception of 19B.
Next item is number seven, vouchers.
Is there any discussion by the public on vouchers? Any discussion by the public? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
So moved, second.
Moved by Mr. Roybal, seconded by Mr. Luna. Any discussion by council on vouchers? Discussion by council. Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the vouchers, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes.
Public hearing to determine whether compliance of annexation conditions required by Wyoming Statute Section 15-1-402 exists for a portion of the west half, of the west half of Section 17, Township 14 North, Range 66 West, of the 6 Principal Meridian Laramie County, Wyoming, located west of and adjacent to Powderhouse Road, north of Spirit Lane.
Thank you. Steph report, please.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Seth Lloyd. I'm with the City of Cheyenne Planning and Development Department. The city received a petition to annex 6800 Powderhouse Road, signed by the owner on August 27, 2018. This petition was certified by the city clerk on August 30, 2018. 6800 Powderhouse Road is currently occupied by one residential dwelling on just over five acres of land. Redevelopment of this land is anticipated with, after the annexation is complete. This public hearing is being held in accordance with Wyoming State Statute 15-1-402A. Pursuant to fulfilling the requirements in state statute, staff asks this governing body to consider the following. The land proposed to be annexed is contiguous to the current city limits. Specifically, this parcel is contiguous to current city limits on the west, the south, and the east. All city services and utilities currently available to residents of the city will be provided to the residents of the annexed land. Extending sewer will increase the health and safety of the residents. The area to be annexed is inside the urban service boundary and designated urban residential by Plan Cheyenne. The urban residential designation is intended for urban density residential development and commercial development as a secondary use. This type of development is best supported by being inside city limits and by connecting to city services. By state statute, a certified mailing must be sent to all landowners and utilities within the annexed area 20 business days prior to the public hearing. According to the city's calendar, 20 business days prior to today's hearing was September 10. The certified mailing was sent out on September 7, and the earliest confirmation of receipt of the certified mailing was dated September 10. The introduction of the ordinance annexing this land to the City of Cheyenne is item number 11 on today's agenda, and I am available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Mr. Lloyd? Any questions of Mr. Lloyd? Thank you very much. Discussion by the public on this matter? Discussion by the public? Discussion by council? Discussion by council? Okay, hearing none. The matters for this public hearing have been met.
Ordinance third reading vacating the Ninth Street Rider Wayline west of Snyder Avenue between fractional block 523, all of blocks 524 and 573, and fractional block 574, original city of Cheyenne, Laramie County, Wyoming.
Thank you. Is there any discussion by the public on this matter? Discussion by the public? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Roybal?
Madam Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on third and final reading, and I so move. Second.
Moved by Mr. Roybal, seconded by Mr. White. Discussion by council? Discussion by council? Okay, hearing none. This is an ordinance on third and final reading. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Case?
Aye.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Laiborn?
Yes.
Mr. Luna?
Yes.
Mayor Orr?
Yes.
Dr. Rennie?
Yes.
Mr. Roybal?
Yes.
Mr. Shaner?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
That motion passes.
Ordinance first reading amending Chapter 12.24 Art in Public Places of Title 12, Street Sidewalks in Public Places of the Code of the City of Cheyenne, Wyoming, pertaining to the Art in Public Places Committee.
This item is referred to Finance Committee.
Ordinance first reading annexing to the City of Cheyenne, Wyoming, a portion of the west half, of the west half of Section 17, Township 14 North, Range 66 West, of the 6 Principal Meridian Laramie County, Wyoming, located west of and adjacent to Powderhouse Road, north of Spirit Lane.
This item is referred to Public Services Committee.
Resolution authorizing a street name change from Prairie Avenue to Backway for the portion of the street located between Dell Range Boulevard and the undeveloped section of Prairie Avenue, City of Cheyenne, Laramie County, Wyoming, postponed from September 24, 2018.
Thank you. Is there any discussion by the public on this matter? Discussion by the public? Hearing none. Mr. Roybal?
Madam Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to adopt, and I so move. Second.
Moved by Mr. Roybal, seconded by Mr. Case. Discussion by council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Roybal?
I move to amend by substituting Short Road for Backway. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to amend to Short Way?
Short Road.
Short Road, Short Road. All right, all those in favor of the amendment? Oh, let me take a public discussion on that first. Public discussion on the amendment? Discussion by council on the amendment?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Johnson?
If Mr. Evans can come forward. Okay, I know you sent an email to us on this last week, but just for the public record, basically the dispatch office and first responders that you, the reason you brought this forward, nobody had any issues with the change to this, did they, for Short Way or Short Road?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I do not believe so. We could ask, I believe Chief Hoggit's here tonight. I don't believe Chief Kozak is here, but I believe that everyone is okay with the changes moving forward.
Thank you. And Jordan, just for the record, could you state who you represent, please?
I'm sorry, I'm Jordan Evans, and I'm the coordinator of the Cheyenne Laramie County GIS Cooperative.
Thank you. Chief Hoggit?
Greg Hoggit, Fire Chief, through you, Madam Mayor, to Commissioner. We, it was a combined communications board meeting held where this came up in discussion, and it was just a miscommunication all the way around, and we did express the fact that the name was not the most appropriate. So the reasons behind this is there are some problems with the GIS within our CAD system for adequately locating those people in need when they dial 911. And this is one of the first steps of many that will be brought forward, is trying to clean up and making sure that all the addressing and the names don't intersect, overlap, and create a problem, and hopefully streamline and improve our 911 center system. So we have no problem with this.
Thank you. Any further questions by council? Any further questions by council? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We are now back on the main motion? Further discussion by the public? Further discussion by council? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion, those opposed, excuse me. Motion passes with Dr. Rennie as a no.
Resolution terminating the agreement between the City of Cheyenne, Wyoming, and the Cheyenne Animal Shelter Services for Animal Control and Animal Shelter Services.
Thank you. Is there discussion by the public on this matter? Good evening. If you could, please state your name.
Madam Mayor, Tammy Mays, the President of the Animal Shelter Board. We're available for any of the council's questions this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions from the Animal Shelter Board members at this moment? Okay. Sounds fine. Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. Any further discussion by the public on this matter? Further discussion by the public? Okay, seeing none. Mr. White?
Madam Mayor, the recommendation of the committee of the whole is to adopt, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. White, seconded by Mr. Case. Discussion by council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. White?
I move to amend by substitute submitted October 3, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. White, seconded by Mr. Case on the amendment. Discussion by the public on the amendment? Discussion by the public? Discussion by council on the amendment?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Johnson?
I wanted to ask him, actually, when it was council's turn to speak, so if either representative from the Animal Shelter wants to come forward. My question is, since we've had, you know, several weeks to digest exactly what the substitute entailed and the way that things have played out over the last week, the Animal Shelter doesn't see any problems with the substitute amendment that came forward, since you've had a few days since last Wednesday to kind of reflect on this?
Councilman Johnson, David Pope, through you, Mayor, to Councilman Johnson. Since I was here and was part of that process, we've had a chance to discuss it, and we have no, no further issues with the substitute. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, further questions from council regarding the substitute?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Case?
Not a question, but just a, just a comment. And having been intimately involved with this for the better part of five weeks, I just wanted to say, you know, thank you for taking a hard look at these recommendations, and I hope as you move through the process to bring us a plan on the 22nd of October that you all kind of look at this as an opportunity to reinvent the way the shelter operates and create really a better operation for, for the staff, for the volunteers, for the community, and as well as the animals that are, that are in your charge. So just wanted to make those comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Case. Any other comments or questions by council? Okay, we are voting on the substitute. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? That motion carries. We are back now on the main motion. Further discussion by the public? Further discussion by council? All those in favor of the main motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion passes.
Next item is number 19B on page four. Transfer retail liquor license application filed with the City Clerk's Office for Cheyenne Frontier Days Incorporated, doing business as Cheyenne Frontier Days, 1230 West 8th Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming. License currently held by Steamboats Limited Liability Company, doing business as Steamboats Wyoming Steakhouse, 115 E 17th Street.
Thank you. I bet there is discussion by the public on this one. Good evening.
Tom Hershey, CEO, Cheyenne Frontier Days. I always feel like I'm in trouble when I came up here. I have a few notes that I'd like to share with, with the council. I know it looks big, but it's in big print because I can't read it, so. The acquisition of a liquor license is not something taken lightly by Cheyenne Frontier Days. We have spent the last several years talking with the City and State Liquor Commission about what is an appropriate liquor license for Cheyenne Frontier Days. We evaluated all potential licenses and have been advised by both city and state that the one that fits our needs is the full retail liquor license. We have had many discussions at the Board of Directors and General Committee level where this acquisition opportunity was met with overwhelming support from CFD leadership. As we were prepared, and we were well-prepared when a license finally came up for sale. Upon completion of two major projects at CFD, the Master Land Use Plan and the Trail Guide to the Future, we felt like we built a, built a good roadmap and a good, good map for the next 20 to 30 years. So we decided to take on a major project, which is our Conference Center Headquarters Building. Tom, can you? I wanted to bring this. I'm sure all of you have seen this before. I apologize about that. So to, to remind you all about the investment that we are making at Cheyenne Frontier Days, this is actually in the ground right now. They're pouring concrete, and it's well on its way to development. This is a facility we're very excited about, and it fulfills many needs for us regarding space for volunteer meetings, elevated level of sponsorship during show, and a year-round facility for Cheyenne Frontier Days that provides revenues to help satisfy our loan on the facility. As we closed in on a starting, this project, a liquor license by Steamboats LLC, came up for sale. We met with the owners and came to an agreement to purchase the full retail liquor license. The purchase of this asset is, of course, conditional upon approval of the city council. This license will allow us to sell liquor during our show without having to share responsibilities and revenues with a liquor caterer. This becomes very challenging, as most caterers are very, extremely busy during Frontier Days, and them having adequate bartenders to sell at our event has also proved to be a challenge. The income that we will be able to retain in-house will provide us the ability to expand budgets for the promotion of Cheyenne Frontier Days, to keep our show the bucket list item it is today. As with anyone in business, competition gets fiercer, and none more so than the concert festival business, which is a large part of the bottom line of Cheyenne Frontier Days. We are challenged to find other revenue streams to maintain the ability to put on a first-class western celebration and afford Class A concert entertainment. During show, we will still be required to pull permits to serve anywhere in the park outside of the conference center. The ability to operate liquor sales in our conference center is, is a crucial benefit in the success of this new facility. We still have 40 to 50 weekends available to attract customers for our conference center. We believe that we can not only attract weddings, conferences, parties, but we can attract statewide events to come to Cheyenne Frontier Days to, to actually get a view of the bucket list arena in the background. This is an opportunity that no one else can provide, and we have a product that brings visitors from every state of the Union plus 32 countries. We have worldwide recognition and would like to bring people to our venue throughout the year and be able to entertain them. I can tell you how many non-local people have told me that being married by the CFD arena would be their dream. The, the amount of people that ask us to be married during Frontier Days or in our arena is incredible. These events can offer, will cause, these events that we will be able to offer will cause people to travel to Cheyenne. An economic impact will spill over in the needs for gas, hotels, additional meals, retail sales, museum, and downtown visits, et cetera. Keep in mind, we will still need to hire food caterers for, for these events, as our kitchen is not a commercial kitchen. So this creates other opportunities for businesses to participate. We have the potential to increase jobs for this facility to about 20 to 25 full and part-time positions. This will create a pool of compensated professional staff for our rentals. We plan to continue to work hand-in-hand with Visit Cheyenne, Department of Tourism, and others to make this vision of, of Cheyenne become a reality. Bottom line is for CFD to have an acceptable rental rate and attract these events. The liquor license gives us a revenue stream to help offset the rental cost of the facility. The wear and tear on a rental facility, as you can imagine, is very expensive. By no means will we try to undercut others on our rental fees in this business, as we will be pricing according to a destination event. In the spirit of our Rodeo 101, I'd like to do just a little CFD 101. Most cities that have events like ours, rodeos, concerts, have infrastructure that was paid for by the city, county, state, or taxpayers. CFD has never asked any of these entities to pay for what is now Frontier Park. Yes, there are county barns that we use, but the guts of the grandstands and buildings have been built by the event of CFD and the hard work of now 2,900 volunteers. This, the facilities Cheyenne Frontier Days has built at Frontier Park have a value in excess of $100 million. We are now, we are now asking for an additional tool from the city to help us complete our vision and expand the economic development of Cheyenne. The $14 million annual budget that has been built to produce by Cheyenne Frontier Days by the numerous hours of dedicated volunteers. Some of the other numbers I think that are important, besides the $14 million budget, is the fact, $155,400 contributions made by CFD in 2017 alone to local charities. This number is directly tied to our net operating income. So as our income increases, so does the amount allocated to local charities. $61,700 donated, given in local scholarships by the CFD Scholarship Committee. $31,500 paid out to volunteers, members of our community, from the CFD Crisis Fund to help those in need in 2017. $1 million every year that we dedicate in our marketing budget to promote Cheyenne and Cheyenne Frontier Days. $28.5 million was the last economic impact study done in 2015 to our local economy. $7 million that we are now spending on a building being built by local contractors and conventional financing through a local bank, more than a shovel-ready project. $265 million, the expected cost of the Master Land Use Plan over the next 25 years. This is going to be a major task for CFD in the future. But the benefits to the city of Cheyenne are enormous. Everything we will gain off the purchase of a liquor license will go back into investing into these economic drivers for the community. Some would say that we have an unfair advantage because we operate on city property and don't have to buy the ground, and we are very thankful for that. It does come with some drawbacks, such as obtaining a loan to, to build a project out there. We cannot provide full collateral since we don't own the property, so that requires a large cash down, down payment from us in order to finance something. So it does come with some drawbacks. Still, as mentioned above, we have improved the property to the tune of, of over $100 million and have plans to spend an additional $265 over the next 25 years. I think CFD has more than paid for its use on the park. It is interesting to remember that the Union Pacific It is interesting to remember that the Union Pacific Railroad Company gave the land that is Frontier Park as a place for the city to have a western celebration. We've carried that tradition on for 122 years. In addition, we invited the local retailers to Frontier Park to discuss any issues they may have about us obtaining a liquor license. They were concerned that this liquor license, we would just stock our volunteer cabins at a highly discounted rate, which in all rights we could with a liquor license. But after listening to the concerns of the retailers, we felt it was better, since it doesn't create any greater economy, that it was better to leave it with the retailers to be able to supply our volunteers with alcohol. We believe that through this meeting and public hearings that we have addressed the concerns that were presented to us in an appropriate fashion. We have also heard there's concerns about facilities competing with others like Little America, Plains Hotel, Red Lion for banquets, weddings, and other event hosting. We think our event customer is different than Red Lion's or other hotel conference centers. People who want to get married at Frontier Park are probably not going to go to Little America regardless. We do not see ourselves competing with hotels in a significant way. We see this as a complimentary addition to the attractions of Cheyenne. We've been asked just this morning to provide information on the amount of money spent on banquets at other facilities. Generally, our agreement is the Red Lion where we have our two events, that we use their event for those two events free of charge for the coronation ball and the volunteer of the year banquet. The Red Lion considers this trade-out as part of sponsorship to Cheyenne Frontier Days. The actual value of that is $41,000. The thing to keep in mind is all of these events we host that we have at Red Lion are in excess of 400 people. Our facility will only hold 300 people, so those events will still exist in the same fashion they have in the past. Cheyenne has a great 123-year track record of historic economic impact from a 10-day event. There is strong competitive competition for the entertainment dollars these days, and we strive to utilize all of our assets to promote Cheyenne and the daddy of them all. For every dollar we spend, we bring $2 back into the community. We want CFD and Cheyenne to prosper, and our mission will never change. We want to make sure that we continue to be the place people spend their entertainment dollars. We will utilize the license to the best of our ability and help assure economic success for ourselves and the community. I would be willing to venture that most applicants, those that might come next for this license if we are not approved, will not have that mission statement. So the question is, should Cheyenne Frontier Days be allowed to purchase this license? If not Cheyenne Frontier Days, who is next in line for this? Will they be better? Will they be worse? When you look at the economic development, would it not be better to feed a machine that creates 28 million to our economy, to hopefully make that number bigger? No matter who gets this license, it will be viewed as, allow Cheyenne Frontier Days to be allowed to purchase this license to make the city a bigger attraction than it already is today. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions of Mr. Hersig?
Do you want to wait?
That's, rather than have people coming back and forth, I think how I'm going to work this tonight is, for right now, if you could ask questions of the witness while they're at the podium, and then if there are additional questions, then we can bring them up later. So let's start with questions of Mr. Hersig.
Okay. And I'll likely have some more later, but we've talked a few times over the last couple of weeks about this, and I just wanted to ask, you just said that CFD's mission will never change. And I want to just, in a non-threatening way, I just want to ask, how does that square with your mission statement, in particular Article II Statement of Purposes and Objectives? And I don't know, I can read the entire thing unless you're familiar.
I'm familiar with that.
Which essentially is, the purposes of the corporation are to plan, promote, manage, and produce a western celebration known as Cheyenne Frontier Days in order to...
Madam Mayor, through you.
Mr. Hersig.
Councilman Case. So in that statement, it talks about maintaining building structures for appropriate community events. We invented this out through the leadership of Cheyenne Frontier Days, like I said in my statement, through the board of directors, through the general committee overwhelmingly support this. We see this as another tool that we can use, similar to the museum, where we have this unique place where we can bring people and show them, it's like having dinner at Shea Stadium or having an event at Shea Stadium. So we feel that it is absolutely part of our mission statement with being able to stimulate economic growth, as I talked about, with being able to promote more hotel rooms throughout the year. It's amazing how many people come throughout the year that just come to see the Lane Frost statue. And we've always had this criticism that Cheyenne Frontier Days needs to become, the park needs to become more of a year-round event and be able to bring more people to Cheyenne. This is the step we feel like we're taking in the right direction.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Hersig by council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. White.
Mr. Hersig, I just have a couple of questions. With the way Frontier Days has done very well for 123 years without a liquor license, and you know, you talk about, make a great point regarding weddings, people that want to get married. Well, I happened to have gotten married at the Old West Museum in the carriage hall. And when we did our ceremony, we got a local caterer. That caterer then went to a local liquor dealership, used their license so that we would be able to serve beer and wine in the carriage hall. Those things have worked well for quite a long time. So what does a full retail liquor license change? I mean, are you going to generate more, that much more than the $28 million economic impact you already have with a full retail liquor license?
Madam Mayor. Councilman White, yes, I believe we will. Not only during our show where we don't have to share a large amount of revenue with a caterer, that money is allowed for us to put back into some of our other budgets, marketing, to expand, to make Cheyenne Frontier Days better. Also with this new facility, I mean, as I talked about, the food catering is still there. I mean, we're still going to have to hire somebody, some caterer, to come in and do that. But as far as the liquor, it does provide us an additional revenue stream that we've never seen before. So absolutely, it will increase our bottom line, and again, all of our bottom line is used to promote that, to promote Cheyenne Frontier Days and the growth of Cheyenne Frontier Days.
Madam Mayor, I have a couple more questions.
Please, Mr. White.
One of the other questions that I had was that in order to comply with state law while the building's being built, you would have to sell liquor to the public for, I believe, eight hours a week. Where do you plan on doing that?
Madam.
Because, right, let me just, no, I apologize. Let me just kind of give you the background from why I have this question. Where the conference center is, if you're going to use the full retail license in that conference center, that's already gated. I mean, members of the public can't go back and forth right now unless you plan on eliminating some of those barriers. So I guess, and while that building is being prepared and completed, do you plan on selling or utilizing those eight hours out of the headquarters building or shoot 10 where people from the public can just drive in and buy liquor? Because I think you'd have to do that.
Madam Mayor, through you. Councilman White, so keep in mind that this is also going to be our corporate headquarters when it's finished, so it's going to have to have access to the public all the time. So our gating system is absolutely going to have to change. In our application, we asked if we were awarded this license to have it parked until the conference center is done in hopefully May, June. So that's what we asked for in the application, so that resolves that issue of up to time of being built.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sure I'll have some others down the line, but that's it for now.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of Mr. Hersig?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Johnson?
Maybe you're unsung here on this because I've been pretty much against Frontier Days since I was like six years old. But as I've told you many times, that I think that you're actually the one thing that gives me confidence in Frontier Days. And going back to what you said even about the travel and tourism, that one of the requirements that was looked at was a conference center, convention center, that this is one of the things that was lacking in Cheyenne. And so by all means, I've told you to go full-tilt on every event for 52 weeks a year. You can plan for your 10 days that you normally have with your western tradition, but I think you could actually generate a lot more money if you opened up and used this, you know, because when it comes to the state statue being open for the eight hours, you know, per week and stuff, I think you could easily make that just by opening it up. And I'm not concerned really about weddings and things like that, but you know, like what you did with the exhibition hall with Comic-Con last year and just other larger events that are coming in to Cheyenne that may want to use this facility because it is going to be brand-new, it's going to have the technological capabilities to actually run this, by the way. If you would have submitted that conceptual drawing to us earlier this week, we probably could have got it on the screens, but just for forewarning. But I just want you to know that I would encourage you to make full use in your 25-year plan, even though it's for more master land, to actually use what you got from your Disney Imagineering, use what you're using in your surveys and data to promote, you know, like you said, the amount of money you put into Cheyenne advertising already to get people to come here for 10 days out of the year. I would rather see your advertising dollars go to bring people here all the time, 52 weeks a year, to showcase that this is someplace worth coming to. And then with your lodging tax and everything else that comes along with it, I think that this is a good fit. And like I stated, you know, during the public hearing and other things, that your liquor license is pretty much tied in with your domicile. So it's, you know, granted, you could probably cater to yourself if you chose to do that, but you know, you've kind of said that, no, you want to leave that more to the local retailers, you know, to come in and kind of take care of the other entities that go around your facility. But on this one specific one, I think you're on the right path, and I would encourage you to keep moving forward. I know you've put a lot of time and effort over the last four years to find out what kind of liquor license would actually work for this exact entity. And so I'm asking you to, by all means, you know, cut the ropes and start doing everything 52 weeks out of the year.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. Are there other questions of Mr. Hersig? Any other questions by council? I have two. So if you could please clarify for me, so if this was to be transferred, you do intend to park it for six-plus months?
Madam Mayor, yes. The completion date of that project is the end of May.
Okay, thank you. And then further, you talk about gate entry, having to change that. What considerations are you considering regarding the safety and security of the entire grounds? Because once that gate is opened, really anybody, if it's open to the public, they can access the stands, they can access the arena, they have full access to everything in the park.
Madam Mayor, you're exactly right, which, I mean, it's not a lot different than how it is now with the tennis hall running the exhibit center, you know, right now. People that can come in there can get access to the park. But I think what Mr. White was alluding to was like that front gate is locked all the time. Our parking structure is going to have to change over there, since that is a corporate office and it's going to be used throughout the year. There's probably going to be more parking and the front gate's probably going to be open, at least during business hours. When we close our business, just like we do today, we will lock the exterior gates, which doesn't do us a lot of good because I think all 2,900 volunteers have a key.
Oh, thank you. And I have one more question, and that is, do you have a business plan? Have you determined which day of the week for which eight hours that you would be open?
You know, we've bounced that around about what days, you know, I guess it really, we haven't come to a definite decision of what day we would be open.
So to answer that, do you have a business plan in place for this?
Yes, we do.
Which day of the week?
We have not decided on which day.
Okay, thank you. All right, no further questions, further comments by, or further testimony by the public? Thank you. Further comments by the public? Don't be shy, or it's going to get closed out.
Sam Galiotis, 8827 Shellback Road. So I probably should disclose right up front that I'm a longtime supporter of Cheyenne Frontier Days. They've used my home for over 10 years previously to host their artist picnic. I've served on the board for six years, and I'm a big fan of Frontier Days. And I'm very good friends with many of the people here representing Frontier Days, which makes it very difficult for me this evening to take the position that I'm taking. And that is, is that I'm not supportive of the proposal of the efforts of Cheyenne Frontier Days to enter into the retail liquor business and catering business and hospitality business. Operating a retail liquor business throughout the year is not within the scope of CFD's mission, number one. Councilman Case read the mission statement, "The purpose and objectives of the corporation are to plan, promote, and manage and produce a western celebration known as Cheyenne Frontier Days." That's its mission. That's what it submitted when it applied for nonprofit status, which I believe they're a 501(c)(6). My understanding is that typically 501(c)(6)'s are prohibited from engaging in activities ordinarily carried on for a profit. This is a whole new line of business. It has nothing to do with planning, promoting, managing, and producing a western celebration. And when you begin to talk about operating it as a going concern for profit every day, 365 days a year, that is not within the scope of Frontier Days. Mr. Hersig mentioned that Frontier Days has received a variety of benefits because of its nonprofit status. The city leases its 70-plus acres to it for a dollar a year. As a private citizen and a private businessman, I would love to have that deal. I don't believe they pay any property taxes. I would love to have that deal. And they have financing capabilities that are not available to the rest of the community or the business community through bonding at low interest rates and that type of thing. So what's happening, my second concern is, is that Frontier Days is putting itself in the position of beginning to compete with the private sector in the city of Cheyenne with the number of benefits that the rest of us don't have. And when I hear the comment that we don't want to lease or use liquor caterers and that type of thing, that then we have to share the profits and part of the revenue with them, we don't have to do that if we do it ourselves, that is contrary to what the existence of Frontier Days is. It's to promote and growth and support the local community. I understand the rationale and reasoning for wanting to develop a new revenue source, but this is a whole new line of business that's not contemplated in the CFD mission, and it's competing with the private sector. It's squarely competing with the rest of us, whether it's the Red Lion, Little America, the Plains Hotel, my own businesses, competing with advantages on pricing to get customers for banquets, weddings, all of the other things that have been suggested and put forward. The fact that you're not going to sell, you say that you're not going to sell today, I have no reason not to believe my friends at Frontier Days when they say that, that they're not going to do this or that with the license. But that can change down the road. Another board can change it, another leadership group can change it. So I am here to speak against this for the two reasons I've stated. This is not within the mission of Frontier Days, and you're squarely, as a nonprofit, taking on a new line- And you're squarely, as a nonprofit, taking on a new line of business that is competing with the rest of the business community in this city. Those, all of the opportunities that were presented by Frontier Days are opportunities for the private sector businesses in this city. With Frontier Days, with the advantages that it has, that is an uncompetitive situation for everybody else. We do not have the cost basis that Frontier Days has as a nonprofit. So I would strongly urge that this proposal be declined. I do that, it puts a big pit in my stomach because of my support for the Frontier Days organization. But it's the right thing to do and what's been proposed is the wrong thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold on just a minute. Are there questions of Mr. Galiotis? Mr. Johnson?
Sam, I guess my main concern is when I hear the word that they might change their business model. So when I went out to Frontier Days for their elected officials dinner, one of the things that they brought up with the Disney Imagineering is the fact that rodeo and the Western tradition in the next 20 to 30 years is, is pretty much fading as we go. And so they are trying to re-market themselves. So I guess if another future board or a new CEO or whatever was to try to make those change, I guess from what I'm looking at on their, from their point of view is they're trying to keep their organization vibrant. Because like you said, if it affects your business and the Red Lion and Little America and the Plains Motel, that if CFD fails to move forward and fails to make some kind of changes to make sure that the Western heritage actually still has vitality in the next 20 to 30 years, those same agencies are going to suffer when they literally have to fold if they don't make some kind of changes. And I look at this as one of those main factors in this. So I guess on that, my question to you, is change for CFD all that bad?
You know, I'm, I'm not the one that devised the mission statement. I'm not the one that devised the bylaws. I'm not the one that submitted that to the IRS for nonprofit status. The mission and purposes that are laid out are what's laid out. That's what Frontier Days is supposed to do. And what I see and the problem that I have with this is that they can go open up a car dealership on the property if they want to. That is not within the scope of what Frontier Days is supposed to do. They are supposed to plan and coordinate and put on a Western celebration. And that has nothing to do with going into a year-round hospitality business that competes with the local, other local proprietors. The board needs to wrestle with the challenges of Western tradition and everything else. But that is what they are designed to do. That is their mission. And to change it is beyond my, my expertise legally or otherwise. But I know that entering into new lines of business are not what's contemplated for Frontier Days. It is there, as you mentioned, to promote economic growth and everything in, within Cheyenne. What's being proposed tonight is to compete with the local businesses. And that is not what I believe Cheyenne Frontier Days was created to do.
Okay, just a follow-up. I guess that's one of my main concerns when I dealt with the Sam's Club issue and Maverick, is that CFD is a local business, are they not?
They're a nonprofit agency designed, they emanated out of the Chamber of Commerce, okay? Which was to promote, you know, grow economic viability in Cheyenne. I think if you even look at the liquor statutes, you'll find that Chamber of Commerce's are precluded from owning a liquor license, other than temporary ones. That, that is the mission of Frontier Days. It's classified as a 501(c)(6), which is a certain definition of entity that does not deal in running profitable businesses. I want it to survive as much as everybody. Put a lot of time and energy into trying to make that happen myself. But this is going down the wrong direction.
Thank you.
Nothing.
Okay, any other questions of Mr. Galiotis? Right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Other further public comment? Good evening.
Kevin Morris, 2262 Tranquility Road. I'm representing Steamboats in this transfer of the liquor license. And we ask that you approve the sale. While this is listed on the books for Steamboats as an asset, Steamboats is not going to receive a windfall from this transaction. What you have to consider is that we have a lot of debt that's out to the city, to other people working that improve the buildings, the leases. In fact, the investors in Steamboats will not receive a dime from this transaction. We have a legitimate buyer in CFD. They are going to, they're willing to pay a fair price. They're responsible for the sales of liquor under the license. They're model citizens of Cheyenne and they're one of the largest economic contributors to our community. In considering the transfer, we ask that the city council remember that we operate in free market. The Wyoming liquor license system is set up in a way that we almost work within the statutory framework. Denying the application on the issues presented tonight is not a proper role for the city, who is directed by the legislature to consider the factors set forth in Wyoming statute 12-4-104(b). This is a fair and appropriate transaction between two private parties. And we appreciate the support of the council on the transfer request. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Mr. Morris? Any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Dr. Rennie?
I'm curious if Mr. Morris can tell me what a fair price is for a liquor license these days?
As things have gone in the past, we consider it the price that's on this liquor license.
Okay, and am I correct? Is my memory correct that Mr. Morris or his group only paid the city $1,500 to procure this license?
That is correct.
So seems like $1,500 should be a fair price. But I'm assuming you're selling it for somewhere north of that?
Market conditions, yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Morris? Any other questions? I have one. If you could please tell me how long Steamboats was operational with that $1,500 license?
About five and a half years.
Operational for five and a half under that license? Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Anybody else for their first time?
Madam Mayor, I'm Randy Reed. I'm the attorney for Cheyenne Frontier Days. And I wasn't going to say anything until I heard Mr. Galiotis say a number of times that one of the reasons that he objected to this application was because of his concern on competition. And so I wanted to just respectfully remind this council that there is very strong legal precedent in Wyoming that says that competitors do not have standing to contest the issuance of a liquor license. Other license holders are not entitled to freedom from competition or any kind of special protection. That's, that's the law in Wyoming. The court, the Wyoming Supreme Court has said that to base the denial of the issuance of a liquor license on competition would be an unreasonable restraint of trade. So competition really isn't a permissible basis or the impact on competition is really not a permissible basis for the council's decision to deny Cheyenne Frontier Days' request for approval of the transfer. As Mr. Morris said, the council's role is to consider the five criteria set forth in Wyoming statute 12-4-104 based on evidence that was presented at the public hearing in this matter. The public hearing occurred two weeks ago on September 24th. The only evidence presented at that public hearing was evidence in support of the transfer of the liquor license. So for the council to now go beyond those five criteria outside of a public hearing and frankly meddle in a private deal where there's no legal basis to do so is unfair and again, beyond the role, in my opinion, of this governing body. Thank you, and I'd be happy to address questions.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Reed? Questions for Mr. Reed?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. White?
What about the statement that by engaging in the business practice that a full retail liquor license would provide CFD, that it violates the 501(c)(6)? Because I'm not a lawyer and you are.
Madam Mayor, through you, I am. Unfortunately, I'm not a tax lawyer. And frankly, Mr. Hirsick is a lot more of an expert on the tax status of his organization than I. And I believe that he's going to address that question, Mr. White. My apologies for not being able to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Reed? Questions for Mr. Reed? Mr. Reed, is this not in fact a public hearing by statute?
I believe that the public hearing was noticed as such.
Is this not public testimony and open to the public for public?
Madam Mayor?
Testimony?
It is a, certainly a public forum, but doesn't meet the definition of the public hearing that was, that's required to be noticed within certain time limits and held at that noticed time and place.
Ms. Reed, was this meeting not noticed in the proper form?
Madam Mayor, I don't believe that it was noticed as the public hearing through which evidence as to the, related to the application to transfer the license was, wasn't the public hearing intended to take evidence? Was it noticed as such?
Okay, we'll continue to take evidence. Thank you.
I got no evidence. Brian Gregorcheck, 1868 Milton Drive, also known as Elf. First man, Councilman Johnson, congratulations on your award. That was very cool. I just have a few things I want to say. I was hesitant if I was going to get up and speak or not. I am a business owner of Elf's Pub and Packaged Liquor. And for five years, I owned the Redwood Lounge. I will say, CFD has brought a lot of revenue to my pocket by me owning those businesses for that timeframe during the year. So I thank CFD for that. I look forward to Frontier Days every year. I do a lot of events at my establishments and it pays off dividends tenfold. This past year, I got with CFD and I served the hard liquor at the Buckinay Saloon, the Buckle Club, the Wine Garden, and also was in the sponsor's tent where we had to pull a permit from the city to do so. This was the first year that hard liquor was served on, on the grounds, if you will. They weren't out on the grounds, but in the Buckinay or the Buckle Club. I'd like to say how professional it was run. I was very impressed with my first time working with CFD. And it was a very professionally run. The volunteers knew exactly what to do. Chief Kozak and I worked very close together, making sure there was no compliance violations, which there was no compliance violations. So I thought that was important that they knew what they had to, to, on the plate right there for them. CFD is also a sponsor. I run Thankful Thursdays. Some of you may or may not have heard of it. It's an event that I do on Thursdays in the spring and in the fall. They in the past have been sponsors of my Thankful Thursday program, which raised over $1.5 million for local charities. All that money stayed right here in Cheyenne. As far as the catering and everything like that, when you guys talked about the, the cost, just for me to have the liquor out there was $12,000 extra in insurance. That had to be bought by some insurance company and where that money went, who knows? And I'm not sure how it all worked, but I know that they would have their insurance in place already. And that money would be right back right into our city. I, I was honored to be a part of CFD for the, I'm not a volunteer out there. Like I say, I have nothing to do for it. But I did want to get up and speak on behalf as a retailer, a liquor retailer. And, and I can't speak for all the other liquor retailers. I'm just little old me is all I'm talking about. Is I do see a quite bit of income. And I know the more they do, the more people are going to come to Cheyenne and the more revenue, sales tax revenue, we are going to see in Cheyenne. So I am, as Elf's Pub and Packaged Liquor and not any other retailers, in support of this. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Any questions? Mr. Weibel?
Did you say your last name again?
Gregorcheck.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Hold on, just, just a minute. It's my understanding that there were actually nine violations. Were they not with you? Can you?
No, ma'am. And, and I'm not sure how it would work in the future. If this was approved, the violations that were out there were up in the stands. That was what they've had for 123 years. This is a totally separate entity. When my liquor license was on the line, I had people in every location, along with the CFD people. We met with Don Thompson basically every morning to make sure, not every morning. We met daily or every other day to make sure things were running smoothly, things running properly. And that was, the hard liquor was just in those locations. Hard liquor at no time was ever on the fairground or in the stands. But that's where those violations became. And I believe that was under their malt liquor permit, but I'm not sure. You would have to talk to them. That was not in any way associated with the hard liquor permit.
Okay, these were, these were sales to minors. Is that not you then?
I, I-
That would be the beer hawkers?
Yeah, the hawkers, but I don't know the whole detail on that. I didn't have nothing to do with that.
Okay. Maybe some clarification. Could you explain the violations, please? And also the, the other?
Madam Mayor, Nathan Bucic, Captain of the Cheyenne Police Department. So yes, there were a total of nine violations. Seven of those were sales to minor. My understanding is that these were violations that took place in the stands or out in the, the, in the frontier grounds, not where he was operating. So it actually had nothing to do with this gentleman's permit. And it was typically the people that are just selling beer in buckets. And they, and the other two violations were over-service violations. But again, had nothing to do with this gentleman, so.
Okay, thank you. Can you tell me how many the total number were for the 10-day and?
So the other, the other thing to keep in mind is those were violations that were specifically towards Frontier Days. There were 139 citations issued to people for underage drinking. So there were, there was that as well. And that could be people that have obtained alcohol before they came to the park or people that were getting alcohol from other people that purchased it legally in the party zone or in different areas of the park.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that clarification.
And I would like to say that they did meet with the chief and there was a plan together to try to mitigate this and work on this issue. So if you have further questions on that, I can comment on that as well.
Thank you. While he's up here, are there any questions of Captain Bucic? Okay, thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it. All right, other public comment? Other public comment? Okay, hearing none? Or are you, okay, yep. Okay, come on for your first time. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Evan Asher. So we've heard a lot from businesses tonight, which is great. But we really haven't heard anything from somebody like me who's actually planning a wedding. And let's be honest, while there are some great venues in town, there's not a lot that I can think of off the top of my head. And you know, that's why I've been thinking of going to places as Casper, out of town and going completely out of Cheyenne. Nothing against the city of Cheyenne, just different thoughts that we've had. So as a citizen, to have somewhere else to try to plan something like that would be phenomenal. And in my opinion, to have somewhere else to think about, you know. I'm kind of thinking that timeframe for me. I think that would be something awesome to be the first wedding in this venue. And to be able to serve alcohol through them without having to pay somebody else and probably paying a lot more out of my pocket would be amazing. As far as, you know, competing with other people as far as venue, I can see where the issue is. I'm not sure if there's business owners who are worried about maybe as far as the liquor store and then purchasing liquor. Let's be honest, where is this located? People on the avenues maybe would benefit from the open liquor store. But for somebody like me who lives on the south side, that's completely out of my way. I'm not going to go all the way up there for, you know, to buy a case of beer as far as that goes. So, but I do see, you know, the issue with everybody on the revenues. But to have that extra revenue to be able to do places like this, do things like this, would be great. I also work for a business that, you know, we're in the process of, obviously we won't be able to do it this year, but planning our Christmas party. And you know, maybe next year, this would be something great that, you know, our business could do a- And, you know, maybe next year, this would be something great that, you know, our business could do a large Christmas party at. And again, with them having the liquor license would make it much easier for our business to do that versus, again, paying out the extra money to have it brought in. So that was my comment.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you so much, and congratulations on your upcoming nuptials.
Thank you.
Mr. Hirsig.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to address a couple of things. Number one, you know, I wanna thank Sam Galiotis. He came, he came along in our organization when we were really struggling, and I served on the board with Mr. Galiotis. You know, the one thing that he, that he helped us change in this organization was Cheyenne Frontier Days has to be treated as a business. And, and, and that's one thing we learned. As far as the, the 501(c)(6), as I talked about, we've done lots of research about the liquor licenses. 501(c)(6) is are eligible to buy, to hold a liquor license. The revenue off of that is treated as unrelated business income and subject to federal tax. So we, we pay that same taxes as anybody else on that, on that revenue. I, I heard Mr. Galiotis say that we're eligible for some, some beneficial financing. And believe me, when we, when we went to build this building, we looked at every avenue that was possible. The tax code in the eighties changed that, where when we built B Stand in the exhibit hall, that was built off of a, of a, a bond from the city. But those tax codes changed in 1980, and a 501(c)(6) is not eligible for those, that financing any longer. So we really don't have very many avenues. That's why we went conventional with the local bank. That was really our only opportunity. And we, some very bright people on our board of directors that understand public finance and contacted lots of tax attorneys, and, and there was nothing out there for us. And I, I hear, you know, and of course, you can take this with a grain of salt, this is certainly hearsay, but I keep hearing Little America thrown around, and I had a conversation with Tony from Little America today. Asked him what he thought about our project. He said he viewed our project as a complimentary project, where he could see a day where it might work in part of his groups to offer a day at Frontier Days to have dinner at Frontier Park, like a dinner at Shea Stadium. So like I say, that's hearsay. You don't, you can take that however you want, but I did have that conversation with him today. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there further questions of Mr. Hirsig? Further questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hirsig. All right. Anybody else for their second time? Anyone else? All right, hearing none. We're gonna close out public comments, and I have lost my way. I believe this is Mr. White. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, the recommendation from the Finance Committee is to approve, and I so move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. White, seconded by Mr. Weibel. Discussion by council.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Case.
We deal with a lot of, a lot of tough issues up here, and in terms of complexity, this is probably one of the highest level that I've dealt with in my two years here. But after doing a lot of thinking and how does this, what have we done in the past, weighing things, how, how we should really look at a, at a transaction, and Ms. Galiotis, I share, I definitely share some of your concerns, but I wanna point out a couple of things that I hope my colleagues take into consideration when they make their vote tonight. And first, ours, our test should be one of, of legality. We do, is there anything legal in our, in the way of what we're doing up here? And I'm not an attorney, but I've spoken to a handful about this issue, and I've yet to have anybody bring me a legal reason to reject this transfer. This council has approved highly contested, high-density residential housing projects due to lack of a legal means to reject. And so when I look at it through that lens, we don't have any legal barriers to approve this. I do wanna say that if this were a new license with multiple competitors, I would absolutely 100% be a no on this, because we weigh those differently. The city should and does put heavy weight on best use when new licenses become available. You know, Sam's Club and Mavericks certainly didn't come without their host of problems, and both of, both of those were approved. This is a transfer, a transfer sale between two willing parties, and I do not believe that government should get in the way of that kind of a transaction. We, I just mentioned, other contentious transfers have been approved by this council with high levels of opposition from retails and community members. And I just, FYI, I did confirm today with Mr. Montoya from the liquor division, there are a handful of nonprofit entities up in the northern part of the state that do hold full retail licenses. The reason for that is they originally held club licenses, and they were basically giving everybody a membership. So by de facto became a full license. So they said, well, you gotta get a full retail liquor license, and, and they did. So just kinda to stay out of trouble. So a club license really wouldn't work for this situation. And, you know, I've kinda, I've done a lot of research on this. I don't, I, it's a tough one for me, but because of all those components coming together, I, I believe I'm gonna be a yes on this one tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments by council? Other comments by council? Mr. Vice President? Oh, no, I'm sorry. Yes, you did. Mr. President?
Madam Mayor. I'll get on my soapbox once again. It seems I do every time one of these rolls around. This issue really bothers me. As Mr. Morris acknowledged, this, this license was given to them for $1,500. The history on this was that originally they had planned to put steamboats up on Gardena and Yellowstone in that area, and the council at that time wanted to see some development in that area and see a restaurant for that area in that neighborhood. So they were given the license based on those assurances. Subsequent to that, they had some issues with the, um, acquiring adequate property up there, and so the license then was, we allowed them to transfer the license to Del Range. And I have to tell you, if their original, if their original proposal had been for it to be on Del Range, they wouldn't have gotten the license. So now they're turning around and they're selling it at what I presume is significant profit if it's actually at market value. I have, I think our, I have always been very critical of the legislature. I think the way they, these laws are set up, they're very archaic. The, the attorney for the, for CFD has said that if we do not approve the license transfer, we're, we're performing a restraint of trade. The license, these licenses in and of themselves are restraint of trade. You know, I'm sure that, as I've talked to Mr. Reed, both of us would like to have the ability to restrict the number of attorney's licenses or dental license that are issued, and we don't have that power. You know, it's also stated that meddling with it is unfair to, that it's unfair, but I think the whole system is unfair to the city. If they can, if they can receive a license for $1,500 and turn around at some point, sell it for 100 times that, that's a gift to them, and that's not right. That money should be coming back to the city. You know, we should be able to sell it for whatever the market value is then, so that money can be put into roads or parks or wherever we need it, and not go into somebody else's pocket. Again, if this license had been one that has been out there for years, that somebody had paid, you know, tens of thousands of dollars for, and they're turning around and selling it for tens of thousands of dollars, I agree, that is a private transaction. But this is one that I know was given to them for $1,500, and I cannot support the transfer of it unless they were willing to transfer it for $1,500. So I cannot support this tonight.
Thank you. Are there other comments by council? Other comments by council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Shaner.
I seldom come into this chamber as indecisive as I did this evening. This has been a trying issue. Liquor licenses are always challenging. The statutory frameworks around them are hard to quantify. They're vague, and they provide a lot of discretion for this city council in, in what to do. And that always presents a troubling situation. For me, I like it to be as black and white as possible. My general disposition has always been with liquor license transfers, that if there are two private business entities, let's stay out of it. We don't need politicians meddling in that transaction. However, the legislature's put us in the middle of that, and so we're, we're sitting here tonight, being asked to make a decision. And in an attempt to, to really try to be as objective as I can with this decision, I, I am gonna try to look at those five factors that were referenced by the attorney of CFD and really focus on those, the evidence that was presented at the hearing, as well as the implications surrounding the evidence that was presented, and the facts that exist with this transaction. And the two factors out of the five that were mentioned in statute that really seem the most pertinent to me are numbers two and three. And number two is, "The purpose of this title shall not be carried out by the issuance, renewal, or transfer of the license or permit." So what that, what's that saying is, is that if, if this governing body does not believe the purpose of the title will be carried out by this transfer, then we shall deny this license. And I think that that, that's probably an issue here, and I say that for a couple of reasons. The, the Title 12 around liquor licenses does not, in, in my understanding and reading of it, does not contemplate transfers of liquor licenses to nonprofit entities, and, and that's where the hangup is for me. And the two sections of the statute that I look at related to that are 124103A, which prohibits the sale or issue or transfer of a license to a chamber of commerce, which is what Cheyenne Frontier Days was until 1991, from what I've been able to research. And then in 1991, Frontier Days split off from the Chamber of Commerce, but chose to keep the same designation for IRS code as a Chamber of Commerce, a 501(c)(6). And so when I look at that IRS designation that a nonprofit chose to, to identify itself as, and I read what a 501(c)(6) is established for, it's referred to as a business league, a Chamber of Commerce being one type of business league. It states, "To be exempt, a business league's activities must be devoted to improving business conditions of one or more lines of business as distinguished from performing particular services for individual persons. No part of a business league's net earnings may anure to the benefit of any private shareholder or individual, and it may not be organized for profit to engage in an activity ordinarily carried on for profit." That strikes me as not being consistent with going into the liquor sale and event hosting business, so I'm troubled by that. And that business league designation and that nonprofit status is why there is such just enormous support for a wonderful thing. I, I grew up here. I love Frontier Days, and I wanna continue to support it with a $1 lease and, and things of that nature. But I support it because it's a 501(c)(6) that is to support the business community as a whole. And I struggle with that, that language to, "May not be organized for profit to engage in an activity ordinarily carried on for profit." The other section of Title 12 that I don't think is consistent with this transfer is 124102A4, which talks about, the applicant, is a corporation which we have here, Cheyenne Frontier Days, Inc., has to list the name, age, and residence of each officer, director, and stockholder, holding either jointly or severally 10% or more of the outstanding and issued capital stock of the corporation. We don't have that here, 'cause it's a nonprofit. There are no percentage stakeholders. So this provision of statute, from my reading, does not contemplate a nonprofit. Furthermore, subsection B says, "Whether any officer, director, or stockholder with 10% or more ownership has been convicted of a violation of law, as provided in paragraph three of this subsection." Again, I don't, I don't believe that the legislature would only account for someone that's convicted of laws for a nonprofit where, if a not, a profit corporation has to report people that are convicted of laws, I don't think it's right that a nonprofit wouldn't have that same requirement. So again, I don't think it was contemplated by the legislature to give a full retail liquor license to a nonprofit. So those two reasons, number two, I think, is met, and if it is met under those factors, we shall deny the license transfer. And then three, which is one of the three, one of the five factors, number three says, "The number, type, and location of existing licenses meet the needs of this vicinity." And that goes to the fact that, you know, I heard reference to the, the 10-days during Frontier Days. It's really hard to get a caterer in there. Everybody's very busy, and that's, that's understandable. It's a very busy time, and it's a great time for Cheyenne. But for the rest of the year, I, I wanna see the existing number, type, and licenses be engaged by Frontier Park. I want them to be hired, like we heard the testimony, from the local business. I think that is the intent of the nonprofit designation, is to support those businesses and, and not to compete with them. So I think also that the factor three is met as well, which would require this governing body not to approve this transfer. So, Madam Mayor, with, with those in mind, I, I think that that is as legal and objective as I can get with this analysis. There are multiple ways to, to spin these in terms of competition, and who's gonna benefit, and, and, you know, all of those items. But I think if we just really look at the factors and what we know and the evidence that's been provided, I, I have some trepidation over those three, and can't support this tonight as much as it pains me to not support something for Frontier Days, because I truly love the, the event, and I think it's important for our community.
Thank you. Are there any other further comments by council? Any other further comments by council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. White.
Every time we have to deal with a situation like this, all the familiar arguments seem to be made on, on both sides of the equation. I agree with Dr. Rennie completely that the issue of liquor licenses in this state is a classic example of restraint of trade. The fact that there are limited licenses per state law means that licenses are a rare commodity, and thereby they become an artificially valuable asset. It's not the situation that I like. It goes against, I think, free enterprise. I've heard a lot of statements made to me via email and both phone calls that the city council should, should not decide winners and losers when it comes to licenses, but, but we are, and state law makes it that way. To say that our state liquor laws are outdated would be an insult to the word outdated. Truly. And, you know, to those who, who, who say the city council shouldn't be in the business of picking winners and losers, I couldn't agree more. So we shouldn't be. So if we want a free market and free enterprise, then, then the laws need to be changed. Because truly, that is the singular reason that we, that we do this every single time, whether it's new, or a transfer, or, or anything else. So the antiquated process creates this situation where what should be a simple property transfer or business transaction is not. And so it comes before us as a governing body to scrutinize and debate, and then ultimately vote to approve or deny. What should, should have a minimum amount of bureaucratic red tape actually creates more when it comes to this. So state law is what it is, and that's the hand that we're dealt. I commend my colleague, Mr. Shaner's, legal reasoning. I also commend Mr. Johnson and, and Mr. Case, because I get their arguments as well. I love Frontier Days very, very much. It's given me a lot of lifelong friendships, people that I respect. But I always thought that the, one of the pillars of, of the creation of Frontier Days was that it would help local businesses and not compete with them. And I think by the very, by just complying with the requirements of the statute, you're going to have to go into direct competition with local businesses. And then, and then, you know, when you talk about the history of CFD, the whole story behind the creation of the Heels Organization was that CFD during the depression years, the Depression years almost folded. And it was the local businesses that kept it going through their work. And one local businessman said, "Anybody that doesn't get in and help CFD is a bunch of heels." And that's how that organization got its name, from local businesses who helped bail CFD out during the Depression. I've, I really struggle with it because I think, and this is probably why I struggle with it most, is that when Maverick and Sam's came before us, they had a solid business plan in place. They had a solid estimate of how much economic revenue. It would generate staff hired, where the liquor was going to be sold, how it would be configured, how the public 21 and over would have access, and 21, under 21 would not. And those are things that, that I haven't been able to get answered. And so I guess the last point I would make is, granted, the amount of, the sheer volume of people that goes through CFD is incredible. There's nothing like it throughout the year. But if any other establishment had nine violations in a year, we would not, if they came up to us for renewal, we wouldn't, we wouldn't renew their license. So I'll be voting no tonight.
Thank you, Mr. White. Are there any other comments or discussion by council?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Johnson.
When I hear about nine violations, 139 violations, no other liquor establishment in one week's having 10,000 people go through turnstiles. So your, your ratio of violations compared to that, it's kind of seems like a mute point. If any, you know, any other agency in this town had 10,000 people going through its doors on, you know, one day, I'm sure that they would have the equivalent of liquor licenses. The one thing that I've basically dealt with myself here is, is that I thought I'd be a hypocrite because I viewed CEO, or, excuse me, CFD as a corporation. And I went out on a limb for Sam's Club when everybody came out and said, "Richard, you're going to kill all these local business owners. And, and I thought you were local business friendly, but now you're bringing Sam's Club in here." You know, I know that Jeff even had a turncoat beer given his name at Local Bar with his decision on Sam's Club. So when it came back, you know, again for Maverick, once again, it was, you know, Lambusus was selling, you know, booze out of the back of the Bijou, or whatever it's called, Old Mayflower, you know, until he was able to sell it. So once again, it came forward and it said, "Oh, Richard, once again, you could have used that for a local restaurant downtown, or you could have used it for another local entity." Well, the local entities weren't purchasing that. So when I heard the CFD was actually bringing this, I was like, "Well, at least now I know it's a local corporation that's buying this." I thought this one was being a shoo-in. And so all of a sudden to hear that, you know, all these local establishments that thrive off of the economic vitality that they bring to the community for these 10 days, where all of a sudden say, "Oh, it's unfair business practice. That's why I bring it." If Frontier Days continues on its local model of not making any change, it could be a trophy. And then in 20 to 30 years, all of them are out of business because they literally counted on it as their second Christmas to have these kind of revenues coming in. So I viewed it as that CFD purchased it on the market for whatever the market value was. I agree with everybody up here. We've said it every single time. I find it interesting that one of the guest speakers tonight was the last one that we gave the golden ticket to, you know, for the $1,500 one. Technically, you know, if he was to come up here and say that it didn't work out, and he sold it to, you know, Walmart or Safeway or anybody else, I would not stand in his way. I was like, "That's your transaction. Yeah, you got the freebie, you know, from us to open up your agency. It didn't pan out. If you want to sell it, that's your right to do so." So I thought, I thought it was kind of interesting that he was a guest speaker when he got the last freebie. I think, just like everyone has said, or most of them have said up here, is that why are we standing in the way of a transaction between two agencies? But that's the course that we've been put in. So I'm a yes for CFD.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion by council? Any further discussion by council? Going once, twice. Anyone? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
All right. Can I see the hands of the ayes, please? One, two, three.
Would you name them, please?
Okay, we've got Royble, Cook, Luna, Case, Leyborn, and Johnson.
Six-four.
Thank you.
Next item, other business. Madam Mayor.
Yes, please.
Under other business, I would like to introduce a contract modification that was brought to my attention after the agenda deadline. That is somewhat timely in manner for renewal, if I might read the entitlement.
Please do.
Contract modification number one to contract number 6427 between the City of Cheyenne Fire and Rescue Department and Physio Control Incorporated, Redmond, Washington, for renewal maintenance services for factory authorized inspection and repair services of life-packed devices.
Okay, that item is referred to, that item's referred to Finance Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Is there any further business to come before us from the public? Looks like the public is leaving.
And taking away the shield.
Uh huh. All right. Any further business to come from us from council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Leyborn.
I'm very concerned about the possibility that Cottonwood Joe, the cottonwood tree that sits in front of our municipal building, might be removed next week. And I have a couple of documents here I'd like to enter into the record in regard to that issue. Starting with a letter from a expert in trees that the city paid a report from a couple of years ago, specific to that tree. And it is very clear when you read this, that the tree is healthy, and that with the kind of care that it's received in the past, it will continue to live and, in my opinion, grace our landscape and our municipal building here. So I'd like to enter that into the record. And I'd like to refer to resolution number 4513, which is entitled, "A Resolution Recmitting the City of Cheyenne to the Conscientious and Dedicated Preservation of Its Cultural Heritage and Historical Assets." And in the Whereas Clause, number four of that resolution, it states, "Whereas the City of Cheyenne," oh, excuse me, it was the fifth, no, it is the fourth Whereas Clause, "It is the stated public policy of the City of Cheyenne's governing body that the protection, enhancement, and perpetuation of areas, improvements, and landscape features," which obviously include trees, "having historic character or special historic or aesthetic interest or value is a public necessity," which is pretty strong language that I believe we should be following here. It is critical that when we look at our urban forest here, we see that disease, drought, development really takes an impact on those mature trees. And in a lot of cases, those are the native trees that have been here for many, many years, like Cottonwood Joe outside the front entrance here. So I believe that this resolution as well calls into question this possible decision to cut that tree down and remove it. So I wanted to enter this into the record as well, Madam Mayor. And I think I've made my position pretty clear here. I am a strong advocate of our urban forest. I am a representative of the older part of town, where we do have a number of trees that have reached maturity and might have disease or age that calls for them to be removed. And I certainly have no problem with a tree that's dangerous, or that is, has to be removed for a purpose such as happened across the street for the Civic Center Commons. Those trees were removed, and new trees will be planted. But in this case, I don't understand how one of the most magnificent trees in our city could possibly be threatened with its demise here. And I'd like to point out, Madam Mayor, that this is a decision that should be made by us. That this building and its landscape is not a matter of any individual, selected individual. It is a matter of community interest. It is a matter of something that we should all be involved in. And it is something that I want to point out, over the years since this building was built, and I believe that Cottonwood Tree was there previous to this building's construction, this landscape that is, that came with that original building has gone through some serious changes. We had, for instance, the boot out in the lawn there, sits where a tree was before it died. We have numerous areas here around the parking lot that are landscaped with gravel. I think that it's really time we took a look in conjunction with the development of the park across the street, at the overall landscape plan surrounding this area. I know that those of us that are now parking in the parking structure and coming through the green space immediately to the east of us, certainly get a different perspective there. So I would say if there was some proof that this tree was endangered, that would be a different matter, and certainly would not, would not raise the questions that I have tonight. But I would like to point out that we have this report paid for by the city forestry that details that that tree, with the kind of care that it has received in the past and the support that is in the tree right now, can live for quite a few more years. And that's an expert opinion. And I would point out that as a native and as a person that's been involved in historic preservation issues, they're difficult issues. You have private property that comes under our code, as recently happened here with the Historic Preservation Board. But I certainly agree that there is a fact that it is a public necessity that we look at these matters carefully, make those decisions logically, involve the full council in those decisions, particularly this one. So I look forward to continuing the discussion because I'm very concerned that that tree could be cut down next week without the proper discussion that I believe this resolution calls for. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments by council? Okay, hearing none. We are adjourned.